He's fairly important.
Well, he's the first item on the agenda, so yeah, he's important. All right, you want to read this? Russell, roll call first.
Board member Schroeder?
Yes.
Board member Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Board member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Chair Bright Cruz?
Here.
And Chair McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And I'll read the LPA resolution to the record. Resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council amend the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 10, entitled Definition of Terms, to define newly regulated terms, amending Article 45, entitled Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-50, uses permitted to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature, amending Article 50, entitled Commercial Districts, Section 50-040, permitted uses in Section 050-080. Limitations of uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses, prohibit or restrict certain additional uses, and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 55, entitled M Manufacturing and Industrial Districts, Section 55-040, permitted and prohibited uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 60, entitled CF Community Facility Districts, Section 060-030, permitted uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature. Amending Article 65, entitled Recreation and Open Space Districts, Section 065-030, permitted uses to prohibit cannabis-related uses and make revisions of a housekeeping nature, and providing an effective date.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, essentially what this does is it prohibits certain uses from the town's different zoning districts, including the main one here, cannabis, and let me explain why. The Florida Legislature, after Amendment 2 passed, is working diligently to create its own regulations on where cannabis uses can go. And essentially, it looks like they're going to be removing the municipality's home rule powers in dictating the areas where they can go and safeguards that need to be put in place for them to prohibit every municipality coming up with its own regulation relating to the issue. In fact, we have been invited, and members of the public have been invited, February 7th at 10:00 a.m. at the Broward County Health Department, 780 Southwest 24th Street, to go to the Broward County Cannabis Rule Making Meeting, in which everyone's going to state, you know, what they think should be in the requirements. So rather than being in a situation where the town is forced to draft its own zoning code, where it would come up with security and other issues, locations, how far from a school, hours of operation, all those things, it looks at this time as if the Florida Legislature is going to tell you what that's going to be. So until that occurs, we felt it was in the best interest of the town to prohibit those uses completely and then work your way back in where the Florida Legislature says they have to be at a later date. So it's here for you for your consideration, why the Legislature is debating it.
Go ahead.
So just a quick question. So basically, when the state comes out with the rules, they will supersede ours, and then I assume we would go back in and adjust ours to meet theirs, right?
Or you could just, the state rule's going to trump you anyway, so...
Right, right.
But yes, for cleanup purposes, you generally do.
Dee, go ahead. You got a question?
No.
Oh, okay. Any other questions? All right, any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And again, this item's just before the LPA. It will come back on the commission agenda the next meeting, and then the next meeting after that.
Open to the public. Anybody in the public have any questions? No questions? Public comment closed? Oh, go ahead, John.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. I hadn't seen this before, but we're looking to ban any cannabis growing or any of that in our nurseries, is that what this is?
That's for now, until the state comes back, as Keith just explained.
Nurseries is not prohibited in Southwest Ranches under any circumstance, because the state only approved eight nurseries for the growth of cannabis. The town didn't get one of those nurseries. So that's never going to be permitted. This is actually for the sale, the shops themselves.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, public comment closed? Call the question.
Board member Schroeder?
Yes.
Board member Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Board member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
And Chair McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so we're out of this?
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned?
We have some minutes to approve for LPA, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, approval minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve all the minutes from the past meetings from 2016.
Second.
And 150.
Second motions. Got a second, go ahead and call it.
Do we want to do public comments, or...
Board member Schroeder?
What was the question?
This is for a motion and a second to approve the minutes that are on the table.
Yes.
Board member Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Board member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
And Chair McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, so adjourn this, well, be adjourning this meeting and go into our regular meeting. Do I need a second for that, or no, to adjourn this?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Yeah, make sure they're adjourned, let's see, we're going to stand and do the pledge again for the regular meeting. Roll call. Go ahead.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mayor, to start off with, Item 3 on the Agenda is a public comment, but I think there was a presentation first.
There is. I'm going to pass that down to Andy to make the introduction.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As the council knows, the town contracts for IT services with the city of Tamarack, and this is a partnership that has been very successful. It's worked very, very well for us over the last few years. And I just wanted to inform the council that recently, Tamarack was recognized by the Center for Digital Government. They won a first-place recognition nationally among municipalities under 75,000 people. So tonight, we're lucky enough to have Tamarack's IT Director, Levend Sekujalo, here with us to join us, and I wanted to let Levend come up just for a moment, tell you about their award and what they won, and certainly what that means to Tamarack and to Southwest Ranches.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having me. I would say it's the Oscars of the technology awards that Tamarack was recognized with, and we're definitely very proud of that, and... But I'm here to say, actually, that I'm more proud of our relationship and the partnership that we built in the last few years, and I think it's as natural as it can be between the two communities and two organizations. So I'm here to say that we're looking forward to many more years of this great partnership, and we totally enjoy working with the staff in the Southwest Ranches. So I want to hear, I want to say here, thank you for the opportunity, and we look forward to many more years of good relationship.
Awesome. Congrats on the award, and amazing, and thank you very much, and we're thrilled to have you all and have a great working relationship. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I really appreciate that you took the time to come up here, because when Andy told me about this, I just, it almost, I have to criticize one thing about the service from Tamarack, you all are just too good, okay? Because we forget about all the problems and things we had, but, you know, we had a server in-house years and years ago when it crashed, and we lost emails, and it was a disaster. And then we went to another service that we thought would be much better, and frankly, it was a disaster. And so when you all came on board, I don't know if you knew that past history, but we were very skeptical, and you all came in, have done an amazing job. It's been, you know, to the point where we don't even, I don't even think about it anymore. I just, everything just works good all the time.
I appreciate it.
So thank you very much for all that you do. Please pass that on to your entire staff, because I know it takes a full staff.
It really does, and so I'm really proud of the people that we have in our organization working. So no, to be honest, Andy never told us about the past problems, so we got in.
Didn't want to scare you off.
He went here for all of them, but some of them.
Didn't want to scare them.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right. Public comment, okay.
My mic's off. We have four speakers tonight, starting with Karen Flaherty, followed by Gabe Chapels, John Eastman, and the final speaker is Virginia Cullen.
Good evening. I live at 6330 Southwest 186 Way.
Pull that mic down to you, please. Just pull it, there you go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Anyways, we have a really bad problem on our block with one neighbor and a lot of dogs. They've gone after me and my grandkids. The dog bit my husband, he hit him in the nose, and the lady that owns the dog came out and said, "You just hit my dog." And my husband said, "Your dog just bit me." The lady on the corner from us was bit by the same dog. This dog is out of control, they have like five dogs, and they bark all night long. They killed the lady's cat on the corner. We went down there, me and my husband, because she was out there on a Sunday morning screaming bloody murder, the dog was there in her yard killing this cat. My husband chased the dog out. Sunday, there was always some kids on golf carts, the people were at home, the dog came out of the fence, ran after the kids on the golf carts. They stopped, the members of that family came out and got the dog. It's a big problem. My neighbor right next door to me, the dog tries to get into his yard to get to his dog. I have a couple of livestock, I'm afraid it's not going to be good if that dog gets into my yard. But it is a big problem, this dog is...
Have you called the police?
The police have been called, and let me tell you, today, animal control was there again, the garage door was open, two of the people were home, because I live in the cul-de-sac where my driveway is, I can see their house. Soon as that animal control came around the corner, they went into the house. My husband walked down and said, "They are home, beep your horn." She sat there for at least 10 minutes beeping her horn, they would not come out, because they don't want to face the problem. Now, my one grandson is only three, and my other grandson is eight, it's not going to be good if they bite one of them. I'm not a very, very patient person when it comes to animals being very aggressive. So we have to do something about it, but they won't answer the doors when they see animal control out there. And I've lived there for 18 years and never had a problem with anybody's dogs. And when that dog went after my grandson and me, I had him jump off his bike and put the bike between him and the dog. The lady came out, and her one daughter came out, and the daughter said something, I didn't quite hear what she had said. The lady says, "What do you expect for an ex-police dog? It is a German Shepherd." Whether it is true that it's an ex-police dog or not, I don't know, but it is a German Shepherd, and it's very aggressive. It's gone after that lady's cat, it went after her cat, two cats, but killed the one, and then she had to take the other cat to the hospital. But this has to definitely be addressed, because I can't even let my grandkids out in the cul-de-sac to ride their bikes. And there's five, five dogs outside, and then they have some in the house.
All right, we'll try to get some answers for you.
Thank you.
What's the address?
My address is 6330 Southwest 186 Way. I'm not sure what their address is.
Mayor, Mayor.
Gabe would know their address.
Andy?
Yeah, if I may, I've been informed that code and Davie Police have been out to that address, there is an active code case on this, but I'll get with Robert, and we'll take a very ser... Because I was not aware.
I think it needs to be ramped up.
We'll take a very serious look at this and do everything we can.
Thank you, you're not going to get much cooperation out of them, as soon as they see somebody...
Anybody, yeah.
Right, they go right into the house, and then they don't come out. But the dogs are...
Yeah, we need to ramp this up, because this is, sounds pretty severe. They get hold of a kid, it's over.
Right, exactly, thank you. Yeah, we have a lot of dog problems right now. I went out there to look at their problem, and I've had a dog problem on Griffin Road, I'm not sure what dog, I did track two dogs, and I'm going to fill out a police report and at least let the people know that their dogs were loose, have been running loose, and it's on 130th. Some dog got in and killed eight of my baby sheep in one sweep over the weekend, and that's not uncommon. That's what they do, it's a sport, and they just run behind them, and the babies can't keep up, and as a result, they knock one off, then get the next one and the next one, until they either get tired or the sheep have outrun them. I had 18 sheep there, and they got eight. And so I guess the reason I'm here is to let you know, maybe we can put something in the paper that these animals, these dogs, have to be confined to their property, and they also need to have tags. These dogs had no collars, no tags. I did follow them to their owner's property, and they weren't home. And the dogs went into the house, they leave the back door ajar, and they went through the pool area and into the back, into the house. So, you know, whatever the situation is, these dogs are out, they're running the neighborhood, and one is a Doberman, and the other one is kind of a, I guess, border collie cross. And so, you know, anybody walking the street is fair game, because one thing is sure, once they get the scent and they're killing for sport, and you run, they're going to get you. And a little kid runs from them, that's a natural instinct, they're going to go after the kid. And those dogs out there that she was just talking about, there's a pit, and I don't blame pits, but there's a pit and a Doberman, and they're out together. When they get out, they get out together. Any dogs that get with a team, and the more dogs you have, the bigger the pack, the more they run, and it just becomes a frenzy. So maybe we need to let the public know that their animals need to be confined, and, you know, either, I don't like to see a dog chained, but if they can't do it any other way, then they, when they put them outside, they should at least chain them. Anyway, I also would like to make a presentation to our latest sheep herder, handler, the town administrator. He got notified that one of my baby sheep on Griffin Road had kind of slipped through the, there was a gap of about maybe four inches, and he rolled through.
Go ahead, but make it short.
And he couldn't get in, and as a result, Andy went down, and Debbie was down there trying to round it up, but it's hard, because you need one at one end and one at the other. So he blocked her, and they got her, and they slipped her back into the fence, and she went off happily. So Andy, if you'll come up, we have an award for you.
Yeah, but this is fun.
I'm actually going to let him read it. Huh? Andy, you can, oh, slow? Andy, read your plaque.
This is a lot here. "The informal society of the unceremonious union of backyard farmers of the Southwest Ranches, Florida, townwide local number 134. By virtue of the authority granted in the unwritten code of owners of runaway livestock, and upon recommendation of the designated animal midwife, in recognition of proficiency and accomplishment, and for distinguished service during time of need in the realm of urgent animal husbandry missions, hereby confer an award upon Andrew D. Burns, the dual titles of Tenderfoot Drover and Good Shepherd. With all the honors, rights, and privileges thereon to appertaining, and witness whereof the certificate signed by the authorized officers of the society, and sealed with the official society dag of dung, is granted this 26th day of January in the year 2017. The town of Southwest Ranches, and it's signed by Deborah Goff Rose and Mary Gabe Chapels, and it'll be on my office wall tomorrow."
Oh, very good, thanks.
You win, Kristen. That was fun. Who's next?
After John, it's Virginia Cullen, and that's the final speaker.
John Eastman, 188. I just want to keep reiterating, we've got traffic issues, 185th, 186th, 188th, and 190th.
Four month in county.
There's a current permit open on a new house, and the last two days, they've been doing more fill, so we've had the dump trucks running, and they ran till 6:30 p.m. tonight. And, you know, when these trucks are running on the street, the people who come home around 5:00 normally go out and walk, the baby carriages out, people ride their horses, you can't do that, because we have commercial traffic running late on the street. You know, this needs to be addressed by ordinance, and we need some enforcement out there. And also, maybe just some friendly reminders when the people come in to get permits, that, you know, 5:00 is it, you know, you've got to shut it down and get out. We don't want your traffic on our streets. Robert has done some great work in the last month shutting down some major offenders that have been putting huge amounts of traffic in our neighborhood. He shut down two big operations that were illegally using their property, so kudos to him, but you need to give them more horsepower, and that is, you know, positive enforcement of commercial and home businesses. You know, we need to have these curtailed, and it's the only way we're going to get a handle on the excessive traffic that goes on all day long in our neighborhood. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Next speaker?
Good evening.
Aye.
I'm Virginia Cullen, I live at 16301 Southwest 186 Way, and I live right next door to those dogs that we have the problem. Before Christmas, one of them tore, one of my dogs, I have a $750 vet bill. They're out, they got loose, they went into my backyard neighbor's property when she was lunging her horse, bit her. Yeah. My grandchildren, I can't let them by the fence, because I'm afraid that they're going to get bit by these dogs. Every time I go to open my gate, to pull out my horse trailer, this dog is like right there. It's very scary, I just...
Well, we're going to apparently stay on it from Andy's comment, and we're going to do the, you know, not sit back and do nothing, so...
I know, they were out there today, again, thank God.
Do you all own any guns?
No, but I might buy one. The dogs are out, I mean, when they get out...
I know what I do, he came into my yard.
No, I know, but I, that's the thing, I wasn't home. I come home, I open the door, and let my dogs in, and my little dachshund has a half an ear, thank God for Dr. Blasky, because he managed to sew everything back up. I mean, punctured, bit, my other dog, puncture marks, everything. And it's like, and they're always charging the fence, I, like I said, I can't let my grandchildren out there. If they stick a finger through their fence, it's going to be a problem. Now, they have kids and everything, but anything that's inside is fine, but once those dogs see anything outside, that's it, it's fair game. Like they tore the neighbor's cat up, you know, and it's...
Apparently, their fence is not secure.
Well, they, the dog is like, they get out, they open the gate, the kids open the gate, the dogs are out, that's it.
We're going to help you, be on it, so...
All right, thank you.
All right. Public comments closed. Any board reports? No board reports tonight, okay. Councilmember Cummins, who'd like to go first?
I'm good.
You're good. Dee?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just have one. Couple days ago, I got a phone call around 8:00 in the morning from one of your favorite people, the IRS. And they told me that serious charges had been filed against me, and perhaps the police would be dispatched and sent to my home. At 8:00 in the morning, I wasn't thinking and kind of panicked, and I thought, holy cow, you know? What did I do? Well, this was supposed to be a 2015 issue. Come to find out, through many, many people, and through going online and Googling it, the IRS will never, never, never call you. But somebody in the islands, or from Pakistan, or Haiti, or Nicaragua, or Wisconsin, is paid to call you and tell you this, so it's definitely a scam. So I came into Town Hall and spoke to our Davie Police, and they cannot do anything, but they can take a report. It's federal. So I filed the report, and I did try to contact the real IRS, and after about 160,000 prompts, I just gave up for that day, and tried the next day and got ahold of somebody, and they said, "Well, unfortunately, there's really nothing we can do about it." So as you all know me, as soon as you tell me there's nothing we can do about it, I have to figure out a way to do something about it. So I said, "Well, you're the IRS, and if there's nothing you can do about it, and these people are imitating you and saying they're, from you, you could go to the FBI, because you're the IRS, and you could demand a follow-up on this." Well, there's really not too much the FBI can do it. So I said to them, I said, "Well, I understand we have to have the IRS, but if the FBI isn't going to do anything about it, what do we need them for?" You know? But I'm not going to let it rest, I am going to follow it up, and it's that squeaky wheel thing, and they'll either try to do something, or they'll try to do something, because I'm just not going to give up, and they're really going to get sick of me trying. So I just want you to know that this is going around, and I figured, because I'm getting close to 65 now, that they probably just hit old people, you know, because now I consider myself an old person, but that's not the case. They, they don't discriminate, they have a pool, they're giving mass numbers to call, and that's how they do it. So I will be putting something in our newsletter to go out to everybody, to inform them, if you get these phone calls, please don't panic like I did, and call back, and speak to 10 different people, and then when I finally figured it out, and I'm talking to a gentleman on the phone, I said to him, "Is there any way that you could take a couple minutes and just talk to my lawyer, because I came here because I got scared?" And guess what the response was? Click! Just hung up. So I did learn it was a scam, and I was shocked to find out when I Googled it, that the IRS will never, ever call you. If they don't contact you by a letter or something like that, it is a scam, and I just thought you would all like to know out there, that I, I plan on following it up for a while. Thank you.
All right. Dee? Here? I'll go. Yeah? Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, I hope everybody had wonderful holidays, it's good to be back here, but I hope that everybody enjoyed the break, well-deserved break. I wanted to give an update on just one topic, and that is the fire department, and I think... I wanted to give an update on just one topic, and that is the fire department, and I think, Andy, maybe you can touch on this a little bit in your comments as well. But we have, as you are probably aware, our fire contract comes up in September of this year, and so we're working at, working through alternatives and/or renegotiating the contract we have now. And a lot of the issues, or a lot of the options that we're looking at are turning out to be rather expensive. There doesn't seem to be any particular one that just jumps out and says, hey, this is a really good deal, let's go for it, but we're still working on it. Along those lines, we are pursuing some other things. We were looking for property out west. As you're also probably aware, the, where the volunteers and where Davie themselves are at, the location out west is, needs further work, and really is not far enough west to adequately serve some of the homes that are out on 206th, 208th, 210th. And so we're looking at property out there. We did identify a particular property out at 198th, and done some conversations, had it appraised, and did some conversations there. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, they seem to be asking way above market value for the property, so I'm not sure that that's going to work out, but we'll continue the conversation. We're also looking at potentially getting some equipment from another municipality that is surplusing it, and we'll continue to follow that and see. So we're just looking at different things that can either supplement what we have as we continue to look for the long-term solution. And just want to let you know, we are continuing to work on that, and we'll continue to give updates as we have them. Thank you.
Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I have a few announcements to make, some general stuff that's in the newsletter that I'd like to highlight, and up-and-coming events and festivities. It's that time of the year, the beginning of the year, and we have a lot going on, you know, starting, and some of these are going to get out of order, and I'm going to, then I'm going to provide a little commentary at the end. We have the DMV coming to Town Hall today. Oops, never mind. Forgot that one. Okay, they've been, they've been hearing on, okay? And if you blinked, you missed it.
9:30 to 2:30.
You missed it. Actually, I'm reading something from one of the homeowners' meetings that was earlier in the week. The 2nd of February, the property appraiser's office is putting on a presentation at 3:00 PM on ag-related information, and probably any questions you may have for the property appraiser's office will be here at Town Hall in the, in Main Dias. I'm sure Andy's going to speak to that, when that comes up, when it, when it's his turn. On the 18th, we have the garage sale in the park, at the Equestrian Park, from 8:00 to 2:00. That's always a lot of fun. We get, we get, we get to buy all our neighbors' junk and then sell it back to them the next year, and everybody enjoys that. But it's a good chance to meet your neighbors and, and other people out there. On the 25th, we have the Parks Foundation, we have the big chili cook-off. Having placed in it a couple of times, I can tell you it's a lot of fun.
Placed in it? He's being modest. He's the reigning champion.
No, 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 no. There's some better chilies out there than I made. But anyway, I have a whole, brand-new recipe. It's going to be great. Need to come out, everybody needs to come out. It's for, it's a good day, and it's for a great cause. It's for our parks. And the, you know, the people get to decide with the votes. There's nothing, it's all, just, it's, it's a great afternoon.
Maybe there'll be a little competition there, Gary. You never know.
Bring it on. And then we have, later on that evening, we have the Ranchers of Distinction Dinner, which is part of the Ed Advisory for the Ed Board Scholarship, for the school scholarships. It's going to be turning into a main event, and there's a lot of people that have been nominated from across the town for Ranchers of Distinction, and it's going to be a fantastic event. It's really being put together well, and the dinner is at Tropical Acres. Contact Town Hall for more information, and it'll be the night of the 25th, so I'm going to squeeze each chili off of me and then, you know, go to that. So it's going to be an interesting day. We have Tisdor coming up in March, April, right now, in our, in Sunshine Ranches, and so that'll be, you'll see some activity on that. Our parks, we have a couple on the agenda, so I'm not going to get into that tonight, but we have Country Estates and Rolling Oaks, and the Equestrian Parks are all being worked on, on past, within budgets and on, and past budget approval that we made last year, you know, for this. Our guardrails are going in on Sterling Road, that'll be in further on in here. In February, we were contacted, me specifically, by the Florida Wildlife Commission, and apparently, I didn't know this position existed, but they have a non-native evasive species biologist that is, and I, and I guess the guy didn't have enough to do with pythons, so now he's going to focus on monitor lizards, and they want to eradicate them in our area. And so he's going to be out here in February, and I'm welcoming him to it, because we've had them out here for decades, and we have breeding populations of them, and it's going to be an interesting thing, because they want to eradicate them. This isn't a, you know, trap, and, you know, let's, let's, you know, look at them. No, this is, you know...
Eliminate.
Eliminate, because they are, they are poisonous to our, and they do eat a lot of the small game, and they, they can threaten human life, so... Anyway, that, that will be coming up in February. Tomorrow night, I think I got this one right, the Hawks Bluff is doing a, an event at the Equestrian Park, and the Education Advisory Board is going to be there to, with...
Food Chinese auction.
Yeah, Chinese auction and baskets and all that, so I encourage everybody to go out there. It's going to be a food truck event, and it'll be a lot of fun, and we'll have a, you know, we'll have a pretty good time with it. Last thing I want to comment on was something that occurred a couple of days ago, and I just want to make a generalized comment on it, I'm not going to name the individuals involved, but we went, I went to the Rolling Oaks meeting on Tuesday, and there was a lot of activity out there. The volunteer fire department was training, and they were doing some very extensive training. And there was a lot of yelling and screaming going on, and I pulled in pretty far back and couldn't see, and there was a lot of lights, floodlights going on and things of that nature. Anyway, I was kind of astonished to see, as I came out of the headlights and the, and the lights, and finally could get some of this. Now, you've got to remember, I'm a deaf, I'm a deaf guy, and I can hear this very, very well. There was a lot of yelling and screaming, and it turns out it was one of our residents, and it was very disruptive. And I would hope that, at the end of the day, that when people agree or disagree with some of the activities we do, that they do it in a civil manner. This was not in a civil manner by any stretch of the imagination. I could not delineate the words, because I, I actually thought there was a drill instructor running, running something going on, because it was just a huge volume of noise of somebody rendering their opinion on various activities, and it was disruptive to the volunteer fire department and their training exercises. And I would hope that all of our citizens would, you know, conduct themselves in a more appropriate manner, you know, when they have, the volunteers have, you know, the job's hard enough. I mean, these are, these are guys we're training to run into burning buildings. You've got to think about that for a minute, and to handle medical emergencies. The last thing they need is something, that kind of pressure, you know? So I would urge everybody, you know, to, to reflect on that. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
All right. I've got a, not much, but a couple of things. I think, as everybody knows, over the last couple of years, I've been approached by some developers, some residents related to our five-acre site over on Griffin and Dykes Road. So I want to let you know that I've had a couple of different meetings over the years with them, and he's been in some of them, or most of them, if not all. They've actually done a little homework. Let me state and clarify right up front, first and foremost, the most of you all know I'm a licensed real estate agent. I'm not involved in any deal the town would ever do related to any of our properties or anything, so I haven't researched, dug up these people, had nothing to go out and bringing them forward, so I've got nothing to do with any of this. I'm only bringing it because people have approached me over the years, whether I was a council member, or now that I'm mayor, to, what are you going to do with that site? We have some interest, this and that. So I would tell you that through the meetings that Andy and I had, we've informed them that a variety of things would be a problem, so they have gone to the county on their own to make sure that anything they would bring forward would not require widening of Dykes Road. So let me tell you, they've already done that homework. We've had nothing to do with that. Is that an accurate statement, Andy? So we have a resident that's in commercial business, we have some developers that approached us, so I'm going to be bringing forward, I don't know if it's going to be the next meeting or whatever, some ideas, thoughts, things that have been brought to us, for us to kind of air out, to see if we have an interest, or if we'd like to do something or whatever. I've asked Emily to get us an idea of what we have dollar-wise in that property. You remember what that number is, Andy? It's 1 point something?
Approximately 1.4 million.
So we have about, of money that we own, related to that five acres of value, that we've purchased, of about 1.4 million. So I, I'm not interested in spending any money to get appraisals to find out any of that stuff or anything like that, so I'm kind of going to put it back on them to say, hey, you know, I don't know what the value's worth, let them figure it out, kind of thing. Somebody else has said, oh, it's on the corner. Well, I've clarified on more than one occasion, it's clearly not on the corner. It's on the corner of 163rd, the five acres that we have in Griffin. One other thing they did learn from the, yeah, go ahead.
It is, it is on a corner, right? Just not the corner of...
Yeah, the corner, correct.
Griffin, it's Griffin and 163rd.
163rd.
Right, okay.
And it comes in whatever the five acres equates to.
Right.
And then it also ties into that park, whatever that would be, the rest of the development of whatever that would be related to that park. One thing they did learn that they would be able to do is have a right turn into that property off of Dykes, and a right turn out off of that property. Wouldn't require the widening of Dykes, but they could have a turn lane that would turn into that site, and a turn lane coming out of that site.
You're talking about then moving that property over to Dykes?
No, not at all. It would, you might put the parking lot or something that way. I don't know. I haven't had those long things, but in the research that some of them have done, related through the county, not widening Dykes Road, but related to that property, that there could be a right-hand turn lane that would go into that property to enter, and it wouldn't have to be just Griffin. Even though there's a left-hand turn lane with a cutout and a right-hand turn thing to get into there already. So I'm just sharing this stuff with you now, so you think about it a little bit, because I'm going to, I'm going to bring it and let them air it out, see where we want to go, what we might want to do, whatever, so...
Doug, can I jump in?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. A couple of questions come to mind immediately.
Yeah.
One is, is that five acres encumbered? Was that bought with any grant money, bond money?
The five acres is not encumbered in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. The second question is, based on what you just said, it would have, to come in off of Dykes, it would have to cross over the park?
It can be, the park part and our five acres can kind of like join parking lot spaces.
I understand that, but you would need an, you're saying an entrance off of Dykes, it would have to cut across the park property?
Yeah, but the parking lot might be, it might be where the parking lot is related to the park property. I'm not sure of the exact layout. Emily can help more with that, but I'm just...
Yeah, where I'm going with this is, I, I don't see that as any kind of feasible. I don't, I, I see that as a, that's a deal killer in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, that's why I asked a similar question, because that, that doesn't...
Yeah, it doesn't jive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to see it on an aerial or proposed, but it just doesn't seem like it would jive.
Well, they, they have gone to the county. What we sent them to the county with was the five-acre site that the town owns, the rest of the park site, and they went to the county on their own and asked what they could or could not do. I said, if it's any way, shape, or form related to widening Dykes Road, this is a deal breaker. It would never happen in a million years. So I made that clear right up front. So they wanted to find out what they could or couldn't do, and in that process, they learned that they could get a turn lane off of Dykes into that property. So however it was laid out...
Well, I...
We can move that five acres, by the way, anywhere we want, but the reason we picked where we was...
I don't think that's, that's correct.
Emily?
The reason I ask that, the reason I say it, it's just been moved twice already. And the, and the bond property, that's not a question I think you and I are going to be able to answer. I think that's...
I can tell you Emily told me that's so.
Okay.
Emily, would you step up for just a minute, please?
By the way, while she's walking here, just for purpose of the record, if the council ever decides to do anything with that property, it would require a formal procurement, so just want to put that on the record. No one can be sole-sourced for the purchase of property.
Okay. Whatever, whatever that is, okay?
Good evening. Yes, we have moved it twice in the past. It takes some legal work, it takes granting agency approval. It can be done, it's just, you know, there's a process.
Additional cost.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that answered that question. If you have something that you want to bring forward, you know, I'm willing to listen before I say no.
Oh, no, absolutely. That's what I...
I've got no other better way to say it.
Right, right.
We, we bought all this property for a very specific purpose, and it wasn't to sell it. Unless, except the casino site, or the, excuse me...
Casino site!
Well, that's the slang. Except for the property, the former CCA property.
I mean, that, I'll just say, that's general, I, he said it better, Councilman Jablonsky said it better than I could, but that's, especially, you know, a situation where you're talking about selling the property.
Listen, you can do a 99-year lease, but I, I think people are more inclined to a purchase than they are a 99-year lease, but anyhow.
Listen, it's an idea.
People are coming to me, they're asking what you're going to do with it. People complain about us raising our taxes and stuff, so if we don't do something with some of our property, your taxes are going to keep going up, folks, just a heads up. Anybody else? Anybody else on that? Okay. Anyhow, I'm good with that, I just want to give you a heads up, so we'll move forward. I'm done with that. Legal comments?
Sure, I'll be brief, Mayor. First, tomorrow at 9:00 AM, Courtroom 1020B, Broward County Courthouse, we have another hearing, a second motion for summary judgment by Pembroke Pines relating to the CCA case. This time, they've advised that there's new evidence that they wanted to bring before the court to show why they should win the case. The new evidence is an affidavit by Gary Mead, the former director of Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Upon reading the affidavit, he says there were numerous reasons why we didn't come to the town of Southwest Ranches, and when you go down the list, there's five reasons. Number three is the city of Pembroke Pines opposition, and number five is a city of Pembroke Pines forcing a NEPA study relating to the matter. We are a little bit lost as to why they are trying to make this evidence, because normally it would never be evidence in court, because it's a hearsay document that we can't cross-examine, because ICE will never allow a former director to be deposed. So as a result of it, in some sense, we are a little bit happy that they tried this tactic, apparently forced by the commission to try once again to get it through summary judgment. So in our responsive pleading, which I shared with Andy, can give it to anyone, it's 600 and something pages, that, you know, we have responded, saying that now that they have made this a public record in the court system, we intend to use this as a trial, and under the case law, because they're using it in their summary judgment motion, we are entitled as a right to show that to a jury. So it should be a little bit of an interesting hearing tomorrow. The reason I bring this up is twofold. A, obviously, it's always a risk in any case, when you go before the court, you never know what's going to happen. B, the only bad part of this case, if you could say a bad part, is the fact that in the fourth District Court of Appeals decision relating to CCA v. Pines, the fourth district threw out a line that said that the fire contract was an agreement to agree and not an enforceable contract. That decision is not final by any means, it's under appeal, et cetera, so it really can't be used yet in any other case, and under collateral estoppel, it shouldn't be used in any case. But they're showing that the fire agreement, you know, should be invalidated. If the fire agreement is invalidated, it creates two issues for the town. One, Pines would immediately owe the town money, because that, that provision was in the fire contract, and we paid consideration for that provision, so they'd owe us a refund of some type, and that would actually have to go to a jury, as well as to how much money they would owe us. B, there's two agreements. So even if that agreement is ever to be determined to be invalid, the other contract is the interference provision, which is almost impossible for them to get around, including two actions by the city... two actions by the city commission. One requiring a NEPA letter to be sent to oppose the project, one motion by Angelo Castillo to reduce the number of beds to 1,500, and a final commission act of Frank Gordis sending a letter to the President of the United States asking him to withdraw from the town of Southwest Ranches. So, as the case is shaping up, it becomes more and more interesting. So, if anyone's not doing anything tomorrow morning, it's an hour hearing before the judge. We hadn't been there in a while. We were in Tennessee last week finishing up the depositions of CCA. We believe that there's potentially three depositions left to take before this is ready for trial. Three depositions being Ryan Greenberg, who Pines attributes to knowing everything about this matter. They're bringing her into the case. We're not. So, now, as a result, she's on the deposition list. Sam Goran, and the final is Jody Davidson, who used to work for Debbie Wasserman Schultz. We tried to depose Jody Davidson early in the game. The House of Representatives claimed immunity for her, but she has since left and became a lobbyist before the United States Congress.
Now we can get...
And as a result of that, she has now waived immunity and is fair game. So, those are the three remaining depositions. We will then immediately notice this for trial and hope to get to trial this year on the matter. Final issue to bring up today is Councilmember Schroeder may be a little bleary-eyed tonight, as today she satisfied her four-hour new, newly-elected commissioner training session, which started from Genesis and just ended a couple hours ago. She's now very dangerous being on the commission, so just watch out.
Oregon.
Other than that, no further comments, Mayor. Andy, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things very quickly. As you all recall, during the budget process, we spent certainly a lot of time discussing the, the need for and the funding of drainage improvements and repairs on the west side of Griffin Road and within the Equestrian Park. Just want to let you all know that I did sign off on the paperwork last week, that we could start to determine what's, what's wrong, what repairs may need to be made. And I look forward to bringing you further updates, but we're going to get to the bottom of that, and the goal is certainly to get those systems online and, and fully up to speed. The vice mayor spoke a little bit about the fire negotiations and/or fire contract process. It's been very interesting. It's, we're, the one thing I want to assure you and assure the residents is, you know, from a staff standpoint, we're, we're doing everything we can to make sure that, that we look under every stone, that we consider every option. We've talked to Davy. We've talked to Pembroke Pines. We've talked to the Broward Sheriff's Office. We're continuing to, to look at, at multiple options. As recently as this coming month, or as soon as this coming Monday, we'll be meeting with, with Plantation Fire Administration and City Administration, because they've got kind of a split system on EMS and, and fire and volunteers. So, we want to get, make sure that we have a good understanding of, of what they're doing in Plantation, to see if any of that applies to us and how we, how we can, how we can find something that allows us to protect our residents in the way that they should be protected, but to do it in as affordable and as reasonable a manner as we can with, with a long-term plan for the future. Because, you know, to enter into a five-year contract and have no idea where we're going at the end of that is, is not where we want to find ourselves. So, we're trying to look at, at the immediate near future and making sure we're protecting the community, but we're also trying to look down the road and make sure that we have an appropriate long-term solution in place. And just last but not least, as Councilmember Jablonsky had mentioned, the Broward County Property Appraiser will be here next Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00. There are some flyers that we have here. I've printed some extras and put them on the back table there. And Russell, if you'll make a note at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, if you bring those in, and we'll put them on the front desk in Town Hall to make people aware of that. We'll promote that through message boards and other things. Just a question, we want people to be aware of the ag designation, how it works, what's, the whole process, what's, what it, excuse me, what it entails. And the new Broward County Property Appraiser, Marty Care, will be, will be here himself, along with other staff from the Appraiser's office. And certainly, if anybody has any questions about the ag designation or anything else to do with, with the Property Appraiser's office, it's, it's an ideal opportunity to come in here to Town Hall to get your questions answered. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Russell, number eight, if you'd read.
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Chapter 24, Article 4, entitled Parking Stopping and Standing Enforcement of the Town of Southwest Ranches' Code of Ordinances, to provide for definitions of prohibited parking on streets within the town's municipal boundaries, authorizing the issuance of citations for non-moving violations, authorizing service of parking tickets on parked vehicles, authorizing the removal and impoundment of vehicles in violation, providing for inclusion in the town code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Mayor, Commissioner, former Commissioner Astor Knight found one small typo. I just want Russell to read it in, and of should have been a "the." So, I just want him to read it in.
So, the typo is in, on page 12, but it's part of Section 24-71, under the authority to remove and impound vehicles standing in violation of Article provisions. Section A, or item number A, the 1, 2, 3, fourth line down, it basically says, as it stands, have it moved or impound or vehicle. It should be changed to have it moved or impound the vehicle. If we could approve this item with that correction, we would entertain a motion...
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Any public comment?
I think...
Well, it took half of my thunder away, Astor did.
Okay. On 2449, D, fire hydrants? It should say, and fire wells. The definition for a
fire hydrant is a pressurized municipal water source. We have fire wells. We do have a couple of fire hydrants over in the Kukina Plaza, but fire wells is what we have.
More fire wells.
So, if you'll add fire wells to it, fire hydrants and fire wells, that would be appropriate. And that's the other half of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else?
I'll amend my motion to...
I, I just want to, want to mention why we didn't put it in there. If you want to put it in there, put it in there. Obviously, when we're saying that you can't park within a fire hydrant, it's generally based on the commercial locations within the town. Okay? Because you don't want anyone to block a fire hydrant within a commercial parking lot. There are fire wells all across the town. So, I'm totally fine if you want to put that provision in there, but the reason why we didn't is because this prohibits a car from parking on a swale of any home that has a fire well. And if that's what you want, totally fine, but we didn't put it in there because of that reason.
Yeah. I think it needs to be there. It does say 15 feet, so, but if there's, if there's a fire, I think the emergency vehicles have to be able to get to it. So, I would have amended my motion to include fire wells.
No problem.
There's a...
Second?
Second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion.
Russell, who seconded that one?
That was Councilmember Schroeder.
Schroeder, D?
Yes.
He amended the...
I second it.
Okay.
So, Mayor, the, the ordinance is before you with the motion in a second.
Call the question. I have a couple of other comments unrelated to that.
So, this, this, one of the areas that this directly affects is the Segora's Church way out on 210, 209. And because the traffic out there and the parking out there is totally and completely out of control. And we have already gone the step of having communications with the church to let them know that the way that the parking out there on the swales is illegal and it's unacceptable. And I believe they've communicated that to their congregation. However, I have fresh pictures from just this past weekend, and the swale is absolutely jammed. It is completely covered. So, we've warned them. We've been out there a couple of times. We've done our part in communicating ahead of time to let them know that this is unacceptable, and they've been fully warned. I would like to see Davy Police out there in force this Sunday, putting out tickets. And frankly, I would like to see them go out there early and, early and a little bit later, you know, because there may be a change over in different services. I believe there is. And so, it would be good actually to have it go out there a couple times and just, just make a statement. We're not looking to hurt somebody, but we've got to change some attitudes. We've got to change some habits. And, and this is the way we've got to do it. So, hopefully, hopefully, actually, if we can communicate to them one more time that this is going to happen this Sunday, you know, we're not here to punish anybody, but we're here to change what people are doing.
All right. I'm on board with everything you said. So, anybody else got a comment about that?
No, I have a, I have a question about those fire wells, though. The parking within 15 feet at any given time on anyone's property, is that what I'm understanding?
Somebody's got to call probably to complain about it, though.
So...
I would think it would have to be a complaint.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, a lot of people, they have functions and, you know...
Yeah, but aren't the fire wells on the right's way?
They are.
They're not on, they're not on private property.
Yeah, but a lot of people park when you park.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying they're not on private...
I mean, the bottom line is that the wells are out there to put out a fire. And if somebody has parked in front of it, there's not another well close enough to run a line to. And so, if we, if they, if they can't get to the, to the well, they're useless. So, I mean, it's, it's like, it's like allowing people to park in front of a, a fire hydrant, you know? It's the same thing.
I would tell you, if we have an issue with it, we'll bring it back and fix it. But in the meantime, let's, if we can pass it like this, and it becomes a problem for us in, in the local community?
I mean, we do have...
We'll deal with it. But I think the police actually know what the issue is. I don't think they're out there hunting down...
No, but we have, we have locations on, on all the...
I, I think Andy can kind of make it clear enough and what we're looking for.
15 feet is like the length of a car. We're not, we're not talking that you can't...
Or three Volkswagens.
Yeah. The length of, the length, okay, the length of my 350. That's about 15 feet. Matter of fact, I think it's longer than 15 feet. So...
It is. It's 20.
So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not like you can't park on the front of the property. It's just, you can't block the fire well. And we've got some fire officials in the back if they want to comment on it, you know? But I'm very comfortable with it. I think it's what we need to do.
Okay.
For public, public safety has to come first, and I think we need to do that.
All right. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. The next one, I'm going to pass the gavel to the vice mayor. Because I'd like to make a motion for reconsideration. I'd like to also clarify in the reconsideration that what I'm bringing back is the town's item, not the Bergeron's item. It affects the Bergeron's property, but it is not their item or their thing. It's the town's position and the town's item. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because people were saying, you have to wait this time, you have to do all this stuff. None of that applied, because it wasn't his. So, I'd like to bring back if Russell would read number nine for reconsideration, or do I need a second first? Keith?
He can read into the record what you're making a motion to reconsider before there's a second. A motion for reconsideration only requires a majority vote. It has to make, be made by someone on the prevailing side, which is yourself. So, he needs to read in the record, and then we can just see if there's a second, and then take a vote. It's a non-debatable motion. It's just a vote whether or not it wants to be rebrought before the commission.
Okay.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the text of the future land, land use element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan establishing a new land use designation entitled U.S. Highway 27 Business with supporting objectives and policies revising the lists of permitted uses within non-residential land use designations and supporting objectives and policies, making revisions of a housekeeping nature, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for recertification by the Broward County Planning Council, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I'd like to make a second on that.
All right.
All right, turn the gavel.
No, it needs to be voted. You need to call a vote.
Okay.
So, there's no discussion on this? Is that what you said?
There's, it's a non-debatable motion.
Okay. So, please call the roll, Russell.
It's just a reconsideration.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
As a result, the, the ordinance that was just read into the record has come back to the council for second reading and for resumption of debate. For the record, since the last time this item came before you, which was before a prolonged break, we did have the opportunity to meet with interested parties, including the Bergeron family, who was gracious enough to come and meet us at Town Hall to discuss their issues. Although, like with any compromise, no one's ever 100% happy, we believe that the ordinance as presented addresses some of their concerns, not all their concerns, some of their concerns and some of the town's concerns. The two main issues that are clarified in this is that in the event property owners such as the Bergerons and anyone else who potentially owns property in this district desires to utilize their property for outdoor uses, which will be fully defined and delineated in the zoning code with buffering and everything else, that such outdoor uses in of itself does not dictate the, that water and sewer be brought to the property, because it would be for, you know, vehicle storage or whatever the case may be, lawn equipment, et cetera. The only way that the water and sewer provision is triggered is in the event that they want to build a building on their property that would require water and sewer. At that point, then it would need to be brought in from the city of Sunrise. Another accommodation that the town essentially made is we were able to reach out to the town of Weston to discuss the ability of bringing in the water and sewer from Weston. And it's, I guess, the western part of Weston, somewhere around there. Weston was actually not as negative as we thought they would be to the idea, and actually remained open and said that they would be happy to look into it and see if that's a viable option, because it wouldn't impact their lines at all. It would essentially be a tap from a new line that Sunrise would put in connecting to other water sources that are in Weston that is Sunrise Water. The connection to Weston, which was not essentially called out previously, would probably eliminate the cost in roughly half of the amount of run that would be required for water and sewer to any of the properties in this location. As a result, we are bringing this item back before you through the motion for reconsideration with the, the changes that we made and legal, and I think administration recommends that you approve it as modified.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, you're, you're the...
I brought it back, can I?
Yeah, but who has the gavel now?
He does.
Oh, if, as long as the gavel's passed, you can do that.
He's got the gavel. I made the motion.
Okay.
So, I made a motion to approve.
And I second it.
Any public discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Noah Hollingsworth, Chair of the Comprehensive Plan. I would like to know exactly the wording of which policies you're changing and what they are. The Comprehensive Plan met the other night. We didn't hear anything about this. Why aren't you, you're trying to bypass this, turn it into coffee and donuts again? So, what's the deal? Ship it back to the plan. I didn't like what I heard about a car storage lot. We never intended for that property to become that, if it ever is going to be a business center. It has onsite storage for the buildings, not a car storage lot. That's ugly. That is not what this town wants. We've already been through that. You're making deals where it's already been talked about, already been done, and bypassing the board. So, if you want us to be coffee and donuts, we might as well just resign, and you can do whatever you damn well want. Ship it back to the board if you made any changes whatsoever, so we can review them and make our decision on it. As citizens of this town, that is where it has been in the past, and that is where it should be now. Not private deals in the back room. And that's exactly what this is. And that's exactly what you're doing. Let's put it out in the open. Either that, or let's go through it word by word right now. And we'll wait until the next meeting, so we can get all the public out here to talk to you about auto storage lots and that sort of thing. The auto, the storage is ancillary to the business in the building, not the primary. And that's what you're doing. That's what you agreed to. You just said it. And that's what you're doing. That's what you agreed to. You just said it. So either ship it back to the plan, or you might as well just go ahead and eliminate all the boards, and you do whatever you damn well want.
John Eastman, 188th Avenue. You know, when they built the school out there, the school has water and sewer from Pembroke Pines, which comes from U.S. 27. So the water and sewer is there, and even best case bringing it in from Weston is going to be $3.5 million, if that could even be done, for water and sewer that's already onsite. So why, I just don't understand that. You know, if Ron can make a deal with Pembroke Pines to use their water and sewer, let him have at it. But let's try to make it easier for him and bring his costs down. Because if you price it up to the point where breaking ground there costs so much, you're very limited, you know, what kind of return you can get with the land. So, you know, if our goal is to generate tax revenue, and we have somebody here that can do that for us, let's try to work with them and make it easier. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Any other public comment? Public comment closed. Any council comment?
I do think...
Dee's got something.
Dee, thank you.
I just would like it to go on the record. You can only make decisions on what information has been given to you. My information is right here. I made no backyard dealings. I haven't even spoke to any of the Bergerons about this. I have what's in front of me, and I'm not saying Mr. Hollingsworth is wrong when he wants verbiage sent back to his board, but it is an advisory board. It isn't... It's an advisory board. They advise us, is what it is. So I just would like to clarify that I made no back dealings with anyone. And I find it offensive that Noel is allowed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to mention for the record, we will look at this again in site plan and zoning. I mean, this is not anything that's... This precipitates that step. This is not anything that's, you know, damaging down the road. We have another bite of the apple.
It still comes back to us.
Yeah, it's got to come back to us in zoning. So, you know, an outside storage area is, you know, it's a little far out there. I don't think it's in anybody's interest for that, as far as that goes. Just want to mention that.
Mayor, do you want to...
I'm good. Well, I wasn't in any meetings. I know Keith and Andy, and when I met with them, I'd spoken to Ronnie quite a few times. It's on the record. I filed it or whatever. So I would tell you that I was the one that pursued for them to get together and have a meeting to see what we could do or where we could go. So out of that meeting, which I did not attend and was not in, came this. And I think it's kind of a compromise move before we related to this water stuff and everything, so.
I also, you know, Mayor, Vice Mayor...
Sure.
Want to just mention for the record, the zoning is not drafted yet. This is just land use.
This is comp plan.
Right. So the zoning code, you can put in whatever restrictions, requirements, limitations, uses that the council wants, not the comp plan board, the council wants. So that's where that normally goes. That goes into the zoning code.
All right. Right. Thank you. A couple of comments. First, I want to thank the mayor for taking that initiative and working to get this cleaned up and resolved and get the parties back together. And I thank, okay, Ron and his family for speaking and, you know, kind of listening and working through this again as well. I also wanted to make one other comment, that this is a time sensitive. It does need to be picked up in this meeting, so it's not something that we can kick back out and give to the board and bring back. So I'm comfortable that... Certainly, there were no back office meetings and things like that and things that it's alluded to. There were time constraints, and we worked as best we could to get this worked out. And I appreciate everybody who put in the work and effort to get it done, and I certainly support it. Any other comments? Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Returning the gavel.
Thank you, sir. All right. Russell, if you could read number 10, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement in the amount of $76,486.49 with Florida Construction and Engineering, Inc., to complete the Founder's Trailside Park improvements, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget for Founder's Trailside Park improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment? Seen no public comment. Public comment closed. Counsel, any other comments?
Thanks, Keith. Thank you to your family. Thank you.
Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 11, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving work proposals with Craig A. Smith &amp; Associates, Inc. for engineering services and Craven Thompson &amp; Associates, Inc. for surveying services for the Sterling Road guard rail improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any public comment? Seen no public comment. Public comment closed. Back to us.
Yeah. Andy, for the record, could you chime in on this?
Three guard rails. Yeah, we had an aerial to show you, and it got away from us. So Russell's in the process of calling that up. Put it on the other monitors, anyway, if you would for now, Russell. I appreciate it. Yeah, as you recall, we got some money from the state last year, and we were able to complete a significant portion of the guard rails along Sterling Road. We had outstanding portions to the east and the far west running from the eastern boundaries of our town all the way west through Volunteer Road. And if you look at the aerial that's there, that obviously, I know our residents can't see, I apologize for that, but the one on the monitor, that's the length of the guard rail. The red is the guard rail that was placed last year. The green is what we're proposing for this year. So as you see, it completes the east and the west end on this project.
There you go.
And staff is certainly very excited to bring this project to a close and protect the residents by getting that guard rail in place all along Sterling Road. I'm talking slow, trying to give it time to warm up there. The agreement that we have with the state requires us to use outside services for our surveying and engineering, and these are agreements that we have continuing services contracts with both companies. The pricing is already established, and this is in order to get them on board so we get this project moving forward. And Mayor, I don't know if you have any other questions, but I think that outlines the project.
Yeah, that was Gary, so.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. He read it off, whatever you wanted, so.
Thank you.
Any other... I just want a quick comment. That this, you know, this road here, I appreciate everybody's done the work on this because this road, I believe, is the single most dangerous road in town. Yeah, exactly. And to get this one completely covered is a huge accomplishment for the safety of our town. And so it's big, and that's a lot of money. This is an expensive project.
10,000 cars a day.
Yeah, yeah. So this is really important.
Freddie.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yeah, actually, this is a very important thing to me because I drive this road very a lot of times, going back and forth to my church and the church and... And people, I don't know, if you've been there, some of those places, you've only got three or four feet between you and that canal.
Right.
I mean, this isn't like you're talking on Griffin Road where you've got a big wide... I mean, it wouldn't take much, and we've already had a couple of deaths in that canal. So I don't know who, anybody's opposing this thing, but this thing has to be approved.
Yeah. Keith?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Number 11, please. Is it 11 or 12?
Item 12. A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the piggyback of State Contract 973-561-10-1 and the issuance of a purchase order to enable Advanced Data Solutions Incorporated, also known as ADS, to digitally convert stored permit drawings, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute a purchase order not to exceed $15,000 and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I think Gary beat you to it. Any public comment? Seen no public comment. Public comment closed. Back to us. Anyone else have any other questions? No other questions at council? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus.
Yes.
Mayor McKay.
Yes.
All right. Number 13, and I'm going to pass it down to Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, as you know, we're working on our bid to go out for our solid waste and bulk collections. We are, I'll say 95% of the way, ready to have that, that bid is ready to go out on the street. We've just got a couple of issues that are outstanding that we had wanted to get just some input from council before we do that. The first item is wheeled carts. The bid that we're going to go out, what we're looking to do is get pricing from vendors for wheeled carts as well as for existing resident-owned containers like we have now, where they just manual pickup of the cans. The question that we have is on the wheeled carts for that aspect of the bid, that portion of the bid, what do we want to spec as far as container size and number of containers? You know, I've talked to you individually. I had shown you all in the individual briefings, the 95-gallon cart, which is what, I actually have one over here on the side. From our standpoint, from a staff standpoint, we believe that a 95-gallon cart to be collected twice a week might be sufficient for certainly the average family within our town, and we would put a provision into the bid that for those who want more would have the opportunity to buy a second cart and pay additional cost for that collection.
Or third.
Or third, or however many they want. There are some who feel that default should potentially be two carts, and so that makes a difference in what we spec in this bid. So I wanted to get some feedback from council on what you thought was sufficient or appropriate for our residents.
And by the way, just for the record, I'm one of those family that is in Hollywood that gives two carts to everyone, so I'm used to getting two of them. A family of four, I fill up two carts all the time, but I'm also totally okay paying for the second one if that's the council's decision. But so when Andy said that, I'm sure he was looking at me because I am used to my two carts, and I do put two carts out twice a week.
Are they 95-gallon?
They're the big ones in Hollywood. You actually had a choice. You could choose 64 or 95. I chose two 95s, and I fill them up. And with a bigger property out here, I know I'm going to even fill it up even sooner.
Okay. Any public comment here?
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. I have been supporting the idea from bulk right through to trash pails, pay for what you use. I'm really happy to hear that people can buy a second one and also be charged the delta, I guess, in the hauling costs.
Second, third, or fourth one?
I like that. There's another side, not for myself. We went, we have like a 96-gallon, and it goes out twice a week, half full, because my wife is a recycling... That's the wrong word. She's an enthusiast. I have neighbors on my street that do no recycling. I mean, my wife would have three carts if I had the room, and that's a good thing. But I got another guy on my street who puts out seven of those normal gray and black with the flap top tops every week, but you never see a recycling bin out there. So I'm hoping there's a knock-on effect here, that you might get calls for additional recycling bins when people have to pay to throw away the stuff that should go in the recycling stream. So I completely encourage this, and... There you go. That's just same as the recycling bin. That's wonderful. My wife, you've got my wife's next-time vote as well, Doug, if you make this happen. So, anyway, thank you.
Phil Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I have seen quite a few individuals within our town that put out 20, 30 bags of garbage every pickup. I think that having the bins where they have to pick up another bin or a third bin would be beneficial and also defray the cost to those that put out one bin every time. The major part, thing that I'm looking at in the bulk and the garbage pickup is the penalties for non-pickup. That is a very big issue out on 199th, 202, 205, and 198th, the very western part of town, since we get the third-day pickup. When stuff backs up, Sunshine Ranches gets picked up the first day, their day, and it backs up a little bit into the second district. And by the third district, we're lucky if we get picked up by Friday, Saturday, or maybe we missed two or three bulks in a row because they're so backed up. And then we asked the council for some penalties be placed against these vendors, and we're told they're toothless. There's nothing we can do. In this new contract, I would like the council to tell Keith to put some major teeth in non-pickup. If they don't pick up on a street, either a flat fee or for every house they don't pick up, a fee, a penalty fee, that's taken right off the top of their contract. And the same thing for bulk. May I continue, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead. Make it quick, though.
I will. Last year, not this Christmas that we just passed, but the year before, we didn't get bulk pickup out west from Thanksgiving all the way through New Year's. We had one pickup right after Thanksgiving. So Christmas time came around, and now everyone came down from up north, and all the friends came over, and here was these piles and piles of bulk. People put out there for this pickup, then they added to it for the next pickup. By the time it came to January, when they finally picked up, it looked like hurricane damage.
All right. We get it. We know.
Thank you. We want the very hardest penalties for non-pickup.
Keith is up to speed on putting more teeth into that. All right. Any other public comment?
Yeah, I missed a public meeting on this, but I'll put my comments. And, you know, Wednesday, we put out maybe a half a can.
Remember, we're talking about cans here. I don't want to go into the same thing Noel went into.
Cans.
With you.
So, you know, we're a family of four, half a can midweek and maybe a full can on the weekend. And then, as we see, we have other people that put out a lot more, but I question, you know, is a lot of that commercial waste from the at-home business? Because really, where's, what is it?
We can please that through code.
Is it somebody doing garage sales, and that's their stuff going out? So, yeah, I don't know. I don't really like having something that size in my yard. I don't need it, and...
You can have a 65 if you don't want a 95.
Yeah. But this is what we're going to be forced to use.
We're only doing one size, I'm brought to my attention, so.
And then what happens, like, I have a birthday party that might generate more than that. What do I do with it?
Hold it and put it out the next time.
No, that's not acceptable. See, now I can just...
And then you get two.
I stack my trash cans. If I put five cans out, I have five cans out. So you're limiting me to just what it holds.
Unless you want to buy another one.
Well, no, I don't even want that much. But the thing is, when I need to bump for a special occasion or something, I need to be able to put more out than that. a special occasion or something, I need to be able to put more out than that, so there has to be something in this contract that allows a homeowner occasionally to put out an extra can or something that can be picked up without having to have two of them around the house.
I don't know. Andy, are you allowed to put out like garbage bags additionally with it, or no?
The advantage to the rolling carts is the collection costs are much less because it's only a driver and it's fully automated. With bags, you lose that benefit.
So we're doing something historically the town has never done, and I have to say, I don't like the idea. When we did the recycling, we were authorized to have different sizes. I got the small one, and I fill that up once a week, but, you know, I don't need a can that big most of the time, but when I do need it, I need to be able to put something out, you know, so I think there needs to be some provision in here that will accommodate me a couple...
We're trying to keep the cost down, and by putting an option or provision, there's gonna raise the cost.
Well, how much? You know, I mean...
I don't know, but, yeah, yeah, so anyhow.
In the grand scheme of things, you know, our garbage collection is very reasonable, I think.
All right, I don't want to have a back-and-forth, so let me finish up here.
Mayor, if I may clarify one thing.
Yeah.
We're not asking the council to make the decision tonight whether we award a contract for rolling carts, an automated collection, or not. We're gonna go out to bid, we're gonna get pricing for you both ways. The input is all valuable to you, but you will, when we're ready to award the contract, you will have pricing for both collection methods, which you'll be able to evaluate and make the decision at that time.
Andy? The last meeting with Kessler, I thought, there's no doubt that the method of throw your trash on the street and then two people on every vehicle jumping out throwing in is gonna be much more expensive. There's no doubt of that. Kessler said that, you're paying for two people instead of just one, it's just common sense. The way I was told it from Kessler, and this is why I'm just asking now, is that they asked me to redraft the contract based upon automated pickup, you know, one driver with the machine that picks up the cart and put it down. If not, we're gonna have to have two contracts attached to the RFP. So, if you want to do the option that you're saying, let me know, but they've made it clear that it's gonna be much more expensive. So, I do think the council can make that decision tonight.
I mean, yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. I haven't made any comments, and there's actually a lot of things I'd like to...
Let me know when you're done.
I'm sitting here chopping at the bit, okay? I'm ready, I'm ready to...
Ditto, you might hit on all of ours, but go ahead.
So, a few things. First of all, I do think that these new carts are the way to go, because if it can lower the cost, and more important than that, what Bob, I agree with what Bob is saying, that it's more equitable, the cost as it's allocated is gonna be more equitable. Those that have more carts are gonna pay more money, those that have less carts are gonna, you know, you're gonna pay closer to what you use. To John's point, I know what I would do, or what I'm planning on doing, and because sometimes we do have some big parties at the house that frankly are not gonna fit in there, I'm gonna keep my other trash cans, you know, and I'll fill those up, and then probably between what gets picked up on Wednesday morning and what gets picked up on Saturday morning, by the end of the week, it's still all gonna be gone. But I just will have to hold it over for one extra pickup. So I think that's how I personally would get around that. My biggest concern about that size is that we do have some longtime residents that have been here many, many years that I think are gonna have a difficulty moving a cart of that size down all the way to the curb and back. And so I would like to investigate the possibility, not that there would be a price difference in what they get charged, you know, you get charged X amount for your first container, no matter what size you choose, but if it's possible to have the option to choose a smaller size, I would like to see that as an option, because I think that's gonna be important to some of our residents.
Vice Mayor? Can I just address that? Because this has come up in the meetings. You can always offer an option of having either size can, the 64 and the 95. The only difference is, we always put in the contract that if a can shall break, it shall be replaced by the vendor. So if you're giving two choices on sizes, your costs will rise directly because they have to keep more of both cart on hand. If you go with just one-size cart, your costs are lower because they're just manufacturing that one cart, because each of these carts has a logo on it and everything else.
Right. So, I guess then what I'm really saying is I'd like to know what the price difference is there. That's, I guess, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. As far as the color, I really, you know, obviously it's not gonna be blue, it doesn't make a big difference to me. I think green is probably the most camouflaged of them all, but it really doesn't matter to me which color it is. And I'll stop there with the carts.
I also just want to address John Eastman's comment about the extra trash from a birthday party. The contract will provide, as your current one does, that any resident who has excess of trash, could be bulk trash, could be any trash, can call for a special pickup for their home. So if you have that one-time-a-year party, you are able to pay that vendor to come to your home directly to pick up that excess cart.
I tried that once, their fee for extra is outrageous.
$250.
Not even close.
Well, that's what it's supposed to be.
Well, for bulk trash, it was $1,500.
Yeah, well, that's outrageous.
So, I'm here to tell you that...
It's not what the contract says.
I'm not even gonna go into it right now, but it's...
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. Just some thoughts on the overall, we're talking about everything on this list right now, right?
Yeah, I like saying maybe back for the bulk and whatever.
Yeah.
Don't go into the bulk, or wait?
Let's stay on the carts for now.
All right. Okay, just if we're dealing with carts. Andy, it would be nice to know what the weight difference is, what Steve pointed out, between the 64 and the 95, because that's really what we're talking about, is weight.
And height, and height.
Yeah, if there's an appreciable difference, I haven't seen the 65. I use a 95 right now at home, I have one just very similar to that, and I use it at home, and it rolls very easily, and it's...
I mean, how do...
But I also...
I'm gonna join you, how do older people get it out to the curb now? That rolls pretty good.
Hopefully I'll get to see that. So I fully appreciate the comment, and let's take a look at it in terms of, you know, weight or height or maneuverability. I think we should put one cart per resident, and if somebody wants to buy another one, they can. They're gonna, you know, with the provision that they're gonna dump whatever carts are out there, and I think the rolling cart, and this would answer the first bullet point on this, the rolling cart will cut down on, I wanna use this term very loosely, out-of-area garbage generated from out-of-area that goes out in cans and things of that nature. I think it'll cut down on that.
Would hope.
You know, I just see it coming that way. And in terms of color, you definitely don't want gray. I'll tell you that right out, right out of that. Brown's okay, green's usually the accepted color, and as Keith told me earlier, it can't be blue, because that's recycling, that apparently violates some law, some environmental law. Once you pick that color, that's kinda, that's kinda it. And I'll wait for the rest of discussion on the other stuff.
Dee?
Well, I'm not in favor of the carts, so to speak. It just kinda makes us look like, you know, Fort Lauderdale and Pembroke Pines and Weston, you know? It takes that rural look away, that you're not got garbage cans out there, and when you're stuck...
Let me remind you, we're talking about saving money, but go ahead.
Well, that's another thing, until we can find out what the cost difference is, I mean, if you're talking, gonna cost me an extra $60 a year, that is nothing. You know, I wanna know what my cost is gonna be, and I'm sure the residents do out there. When you go and you purchase these nice brute garbage cans with snap-down lids from Home Depot, you're not talking $20, or 30, or 40, you're talking 60 bucks. And when you have a good-sized family, and I do, and I put my six cans out there, and then some cheap cans, because sometimes I have more, what do you do with these? You know, you're stuck with all these cans that cost you a lot of money.
You get a ladder, you stand up and jump in it and pack it down? What can I tell you?
Colors don't mean nothing, but like I said, I think it just makes you look like, I was riding around the other day, and I wanted to comment on something that one of the residents said. I'd been in Rolling Oats, they had a problem, I was told about it, I reported it, I rode back out there on garbage day, them guys were out there, they picked up all the garbage, and they closed every lid, and they did it in Sunshine Ranches. And I stopped the truck, I told the gentleman, you know, thank you for doing that, and thank you for closing the lid, because I can't tell you how many days it's rained, and you know, you get your six, eight inches in there, and you can't even move the things to dump them over to do that. As far as the rolling cart, I might be the only exception to the world, but I don't think I am. I have an extremely long gravel driveway, so to drag that down the gravel driveway, I can honestly tell you Mike is going to kill me. But maybe he'll like it because he doesn't have to lug eight cans out on the mule to get them out to the thing, so it's kinda like a double-edged sword here.
He'll create a contraption to tow it behind the mule, I promise.
He probably will invent something, but that doesn't pull very easy. I've tried to pull the recycle when we had it up by the house, now we just leave it at the barn, and come garbage day, it's usually empty unless there's beer cans in there, which that's a good possibility, but, and then we just take the recycling bins that are up at the house and put them in the recycling down there because you don't have to pull as far. But that is a real big problem, trying to pull that down a gravel driveway, you know, one that's not asphalt or pavers or whatever, so... Until we get the bottom line, until Andy gets the prices in, I, you know, I don't understand how we can, you know, really decide anything.
Well, he's looking for our input before he does that.
Well, that's fine. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one last quick comment, is, we need a way, when this, if this happens, if we go to these carts, we need an easy way to throw away our old trash cans. They're the toughest things to throw away, because you put them at the corner and nobody picks them up, you know, they just sit there. So, seriously, we need to have a way, I don't know how you get, do it via bulk?
They'd go out for bulk, yeah.
Fill it up with clippings and just leave it out there, so they can.
I mean, because, but those people that go around and pick through our garbage, they'll pick them up and take them.
Mayor, if I may?
Sir, go ahead.
It sounds like the council consensus, and I'm guessing here, but it sounds like one cart per household with the opportunity for people to buy more, that you'd like to see perhaps the 95-gallon as the default size, but with people with an opportunity to potentially get a smaller cart, similar to what we did with the recycling bin. So that you'd like to see a smaller cart available at the same cost, but available to some who may prefer to have a smaller cart. Is that, is that fair?
I think that's accurate, and also still a quote on...
On the collection.
On the collection, the way it is.
All right.
Lot of controversy.
Okay, the next item that I needed some input.
Listen, and you wanted a short meeting, it's your fault for putting this on the agenda, because that's why this is going along. I just wanted to heads up, and I'm blaming you.
I'm gonna leave before the next item.
Andy, can I, can I explain the other one? Because I'll just explain it from a legal standpoint. Currently, our process is really messed up, okay, it really is. You have the Waste Management Company go to a property, they look at a pile of trash, and they say, that's bigger than 12 cubic yards, I'm not picking it up. They'll sometimes spray it, they'll sometimes not. They'll then later call or send an email to Sandy, Robert, someone in the town, and say, I didn't pick up this trash because it, this bulk trash, because it exceeded 12 cubic yards, it was 13, 14, 15 cubic yards. Then they have to send Robert back out, Robert then goes and cites the property owner for putting out too much bulk trash, comes back, issues a warning letter, a notice of violation, sends it to him. Then that property owner has to call the manage, the Waste Management Company, and tells them to come back out, because now I have to remove the bulk trash from my property, or they have to take that trash all the way back into their property. And as a result of that, when Waste comes back out, it charges them a fee. Thought it was $250, but now Doug's telling me $1,500.
It depends what it is, I don't know if that's $250, but I know an overage that a resident called for the additional pickup was at $50.
It must have been the size of their pile. So, and as a result, it's a very long tedious process for a resident, and it never keeps the town fully clean, because they're constantly blowing by piles that they think are too big and never picking them up, you know? It's led to huge violation fines for residents and otherwise, and on every code enforcement hearing we have, a resident will come in and say, how did I get charged $250 a day for having my bulk in front of my house? Why didn't you guys come and pick it up? And eventually it's picked up, but it could be a week, you know, 10 days later by the time the town intervenes. So when we met with Kessler, we made a suggestion that is done in a lot of the other municipalities, and it's very simple. If a bulk pile is bigger than 12 cubic yards, which is the amount that the town feels is appropriate for bulk trash, they will photograph it, they will categorize it, they'll delineate it, and they'll pick it up then. They'll do everything then, so that bulk is out of that front lawn and picked up then. They'll then send that resident a bill saying, here's your photographs, here's the delineation, you had much greater than 12 cubic yard, there's always a fudge factor there, they don't nail you on 13, it's, you know, it's generally much more than that. And then they send the bill directly to the resident, then if the resident doesn't pay that bill, then it's turned over to Robert for collection of just the amount owed, and not a continuing daily fine that adds up to thousands and thousands of dollars. We recommended this to the council because we just think it's an easier, cleaner process, and something that the residents will appreciate having, rather than them having to be proactive every time and trying to get a recollection of their bulk trash. The only downsides to this process is the fact that if a resident put out too much, it doesn't give them the opportunity to bring it back in, but even if they had that opportunity today, Robert would have cited them before they brought it back in anyway, so it's a little bit of a catch-22. But in the end, we think that if our contract says that this is the option, and that our contract delineates how much per cubic yard over the 12 is, then it protects everyone and the resident by knowing, okay, I went 13, 13 is only another 25 bucks, 14 is another 25 bucks, whatever the number is. The problem now is that the resident's getting assessed a return call fee, which is more money than actually the pickup of the trash to begin with, because they're making a special pickup to that property, and that's what we're being told. So, we wanted to bring it back to you for your consideration.
Go ahead.
Couple of comments. If that, that sounds like a cleaner process, if it's also deemed to be a cleaner process by our hauler, then, you know, I'm all for it. If they are not used to this process, and it's gonna throw them off, then, you know, we obviously don't want to introduce something new to them that's gonna raise our cost.
We've been told it is cheaper for them to do this than what we currently have, because they just make one pass on the street and pick up everything.
Right, okay.
Okay, so they're gonna, let me jump in with you if I may. So they're gonna submit any overage bill to the property owner themselves. If it doesn't get paid, they're gonna submit it to our code enforcement, and we're gonna follow it up to collection or turn it into a lien. Okay. But initially, they're gonna try to collect it on their own. Okay, so we kick in after a month or six weeks, or... Okay. My only other concern, which we haven't talked about, which I'm gonna throw you a curveball in the middle of this, is the hydraulic leaks on the trucks and the equipment at pickup sites, which is a huge problem, and to my knowledge, they have clean packs in the back of their cabs to put out and put down when they spill these hydraulic spills. To my knowledge, they've never, ever used one, and I could tell you of 20 occasions they've had hydraulic spills, and they just keep going and going and going until their hydraulic tank is empty at every pickup. I've personally stopped next to one of these trucks that was dumping hydraulic fluid, and told the driver and yelled at him, you gotta stop, you know, you're pouring fluid, and they ignore you! Anyhow, I just wanted to throw that in.
Well, Mayor, you're in some ways jumping ahead to the next item on the list, which Keith is working on, we don't need council input on that, but that's exactly, the liquidated damages and penalties.
I'm gonna, I'll jump to three now, because it got brought up anyway. I want to put as much teeth in this contract as possible. I've been shot down by the Kessler group consistently every time I've tried, because they tell me what I'm trying to do is blatantly illegal. I actually have to look up and figure out why they're telling me what I'm doing is illegal, and then I'll get back to you on it, I've been preparing... Um, and, uh, then I'll get back to you on it. I've been preparing for a hearing tomorrow, so I haven't done that yet. But we will put the maximum penalties that we're allowed to under law in the contract. They just told me that the, the penalties that I was prescribing were liquidated damages and way too high and that they would never be sustainable. Um, and I've need to meet with their attorneys and find out why they're telling me what I wanted to do is not possible.
Well, I think you also have to remind them that we're, we're 90-plus percent on a well water out here.
So I would hope that would have a difference.
I, I will say that we've got to do something. Um, I actually, um, your dad came to my mind, uh, over the, over the holidays and everything because I know he fought so hard to get on a good cycle on bulk, to have it cleaned up so that our town always looked good. Um, that was one of the things that, uh, when I first come on the council, he drilled into me early on. Um, and, and it came back to me because I've never seen our area out west, especially because I think that's at the end of the route and it gets such poor service over the last six months. Um, I've never seen it look so bad to the point where you can't even tell anymore. And it, and it breeds bad habits. You can't even tell anymore when bulk pickup week is and when it's not. Because it's either leftover from the previous week and so then people put out new stuff for the next week and it's, it's this, there's bulk out there all the time again. Yeah, it's, it's back the way it used to be. So whatever we have to do to get something in there to, to get that back to the way it was, um, I really think we need to, we need to do that. Um, and so.
Can I jump in now?
Sure.
Okay, um, it's a lot cleaner, we're talking strictly bulk right now. It's a lot cleaner by having the hauler, you know, take it all out. I can see a potential for abuse by the hauler, especially if they know it's, uh, cha-ching. Uh, they can.
They got to document it though.
I, I get that. I get that. I get that. Um, the 12 yards, you know, three by four by, by three. Um, you know, if there was some mechanism that would, and I don't know, tape measure PVC poles, and this may sound silly, but I, I, I can honestly see where a lot of the stuff we put out, and I, I know in my own particular case, I'm putting out branches and the branches stick up. There's a lot of air in between the branches. You know what I mean? If I had a front end loader and I smacked it down, it would probably compress to about a third of its size, you know, that kind of thing. So I, um, I've been kind of hesitant about this where we take something out of the process with the code, uh, with code, uh, because of the, the potential for abuse by the hauler. In other words, this could turn into a cash cow for them. For, yeah, well, I'm just pointing something out. It, if it, if it's, uh, cleaner and easier to use, uh, I, I would say to go with, to go with that end of it for the specification, where the hauler would, uh, would pick it all up and then document it thoroughly. Uh, I'm just putting that out there that I could just see, I could just see the potential for the hauler to, to, to really clean up on this, you know?
Yeah, I, I got to make a comment on that. I almost made the comment before you spoke and I thought, no, I'll cut it off there. But I, it kind of goes to what, it goes to what you're just saying. There already is a cash cow out there and I, I see it all the time. Maybe it's just my neighbors, but I think that, I think it's all over town. Um, there's a bunch of, there's a bunch of stuff to be picked up, clearly more than the 12 yards. And the homeowner is standing out front waiting for the truck to show up. A little financial transaction takes place and it all gets picked up, no questions asked.
The drivers get the bulk.
Oh man, I've been using cases of Corona on a. That's not enough anymore? You guys are just.
So if anything, the cash is just moving from the street.
To the driver.
To the front office, um, where, I know. And, uh, and, you know, but at least then we get some credit for that extra cash and maybe it'll help us on a future negotiation or something. So I, I think the cash is already exchanged.
Cash cow, yeah, that's a good point. Um, a, Keith is recommending option one is it's a lot, it's, it's a lot cleaner for, for everybody. Um, I guess we'll just have to keep an eye on it. I would, I would not want to take that out of the spec uh, because I know it'll, it'll, it, uh, will be cheaper for the residents over the long run in terms of our, uh, uh, amount of the contract. Um, the other thing is, uh, you know, ditto on the, you know, let Keith try to put as much teeth as, uh, as he can into the contract, you know?
Without a doubt.
You know, as far as.
On both sides.
And I'll jump into the last item, the franchise fees. Uh, I, I don't advocate raising that. If we, we had it where we're at, uh, basically you're just telling the, the hauler to, to charge the residents more. You know, I don't have.
They charge too much now.
I don't, I don't advocate that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Dee?
I, I think it would be a, a, a good idea because the bulk would all get picked up at one time. It would, it definitely would be cleaner. Something definitely has to be done about out west because it is messy out there. And it's been messy for quite a while. But there's got to be something that we can put in the contract. Um, just talking with Andy that, you know, we could spot check to make sure that no one's being abused or hurt by it. But, uh, if, if we find out that it is being done, there should not be a second chance. That's it. Stops right there. And I don't know what can be put in there to do that, but the first time that anybody catches somebody gouging them or extorting monies, and that's basically what it is, it needs to be stopped right then and there. That's it. Cut them off. So if, if we can do something like that, I, I think the town would look cleaner. I don't think we would get as much, uh, drive around, uh, this area and find a good spot to dump garbage because he's got a pile out there. It's brown and crusty. It's been there for a while. Who's going to even know? That needs to be stopped. So this probably would stop a lot of it. And, uh, and hopefully we can clean up your messy west.
That would be nice.
That's it.
All right, well, one thing I want to throw in there is that, uh, related to illegal dumping on somebody's property and the bulk trucks getting picked up, how will that work? Uh, sometimes the people out of the country or sometimes people are smart enough to make a police report related to their defense. But how's that going to happen if it's an illegal dump and the bulk picks it up anyway? And we cite the property owner and it wasn't theirs?
Property owner always has the responsibility of maintaining their property.
I, listen, I get that.
Regardless, and if they're out of town, I don't know how they put the bulk out to begin with.
Somebody else does inform them.
You know, but regardless, you're always responsible to maintain your property, whether it's exterior, interior, or someone dumping on it. Uh, those who do file police report, Robert and I have been very proactive in not going after those people. Uh, because if.
I come to the hearings, I know.
And someone who files a police report, you know that they've actually are telling the truth and that, uh, someone dumped on their property. Um, so, you know, it's, it's going to be the same thing here. If someone is constantly getting dumped on, they're going to call the police and, and have proof that they, you know, suffered that, that's not theirs.
Okay, so what are we doing?
You got what you need, Andy?
Sure, clear as mud.
You got more than, you got more than you need?
Uh, yeah, I think we do, but I, I think we got enough that Keith and I are going to be able to, to hash this through and, and come up with, uh, with something that'll, that'll make sense.
And the franchise fee?
The franchise fee, it sounds like council's, uh, just wants to leave it where it is and, and not proposing any change. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I thi, I think we're good, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I don't know. Why do we have to? Okay, well, they don't, don't do franchise fee if you can get away with it.
What is, what is the purpose?
I, I would let Marty step. Marty stepped away for just a moment. I would really let him answer that.
The franchise fee is a direct pass through to the residents. If you make it 10,000, they add 10,000 to the.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but usually it's placed there to cover some administrative upfront costs or something like that.
It's different. There are two types of fees. Uh, our contract in the last one, and this one will as well, has a certain dollar amount for the cost of the actual procurement itself. So we generally put in there, you, the vendor who gets award has to pay the town 25, $35,000, whatever it is, to cover all of staff's time and, and the town's time in actually putting out the procurement. No doubt that that dollar amount is also put back in as a fee to the town later.
Sure.
So it's the same thing with the franchise fee. Marty will come in here and say that the $5,000 helps to incur, uh, uh, you know, a portion of probably Sandy's salary that he attributes to the $5,000 and that's how he runs it through his books. But no matter what, whatever the franchise fee is, i- it's just another tax on the residents. It's just being, it's just being, you know, put back on them anyway. So whether it's 5,000, 10,000, 20,000, any amount is added to the amount of the, uh, of the pickup anyway. But it, it's nominal. It really doesn't make a difference. But, uh, you know, it's so nominal that I was questioning Russell, why we even have it.
All right, so good. Move on. Okay.
Let's move on. Uh, 14. I'm going to pass this to Keith to explain.
Sure, Mayor, and.
Because you do such a good job of explaining that.
Thank you all. Many of you have gotten back to me on this and, uh, Councilmember Schroder and I spoke at length about this and, and for members of the public. Uh, this is the timeframe that, uh, the council has the opportunity to do an annual review of its, uh, uh, town administrator and town, town financial administrator pursuant to their contract. Uh, Russell got thrown into the mix, um, not by his own accord, but, uh, his contract actually doesn't provide a review. But I think Andy likes to give him heat, so he puts him in here as well. So, uh, since, uh, Russell's been here, it's also included, uh, the review of Russell as well. Uh, annually, the town, uh, budgets, um, automatically, it's, it's in your budget. The council approved it. A 0 to 5% salary increase, salary increase for town employees. What does that mean? That means that annually Andy is charged with the ability to modify an employee's salary between 0 and 5% based upon the performance of that employee and also CPI and other factors, uh, the cost of living and others that, uh, Andy looks in and makes his own evaluation when determining the employees. The council creates the budget. He then implements it based upon what he feels, but up to a maximum of 5%. That additional 5% um, amount for potential raises is also, um, included in the budget for the three charter officials, meaning, uh, Andy, Marty, and Russell. Um, they do that as a placeholder so that in the event, uh, you believe that their performance uh, was decent over a course of a year, that you all could, uh, give a, a bonus of up to 5% without ever worrying that you'd have to dip into, uh, reserves uh, to pay such, uh, bonuses, salary increases, et cetera. Um, so it's there as a placeholder for your consideration. Annually, um, I have the opportunity of, uh, meeting with Andy and hear the wish list of the, uh, three charter employees, uh, which I provided, uh, to the town previously, um, in, in writing, uh, for purposes of the record for the residents who may not have, uh, seen the wish list. Uh, I believe for, I'll start with Russell. Russell requested a 5% increase in his salary plus a 2% bonus, plus, uh, Marty asked for a 2% addition to his pension. And because of that, it affects everyone's pension. So essentially it would have been 5 plus 2 plus 2. Uh, Marty's request was a, uh, 2% increase to his pension and I think a 1% uh, uh, salary increase for a total of 3%. And Andy came back with, um, I don't want anything. Um, I just, uh, want, uh, the town to consider enabling me to do a study uh, on the, the salaries and benefits given to our staff and to come back to the council with my findings and for the town council to review those findings and look, whether it's high, low, medium, whatever it is, at the next, uh, budget time um, so that he has some updated data on what, uh, salary should be for similarly sized municipalities within, uh, the general region. Um, after listening to everything and reviewing everything, including the budget, the budget books just came out recently and it showed that the town had a much better than expected, uh, year. Even with the purchase of the CCA property, the town was able to add an additional 311,000 unanticipated dollars to its reserves. Um, so we were under budget by 311,000, which was a very nice fee. So after looking at everything and, and hearing what everyone was asking for, I made a recommendation to the council and that recommendation is that I believe that we should consider giving, uh, the employees a 5% each bonus. Not a raise, not a salary raise, a one-time bonus of 5% each. Um, roughly, it's, uh, like close to 5,000, 6,000 change and, uh, 8,000 and change for Andy is, is roughly how it comes up. I believe that, uh, providing a bonus in lieu of a salary increase gives the town greater protection for multiple reasons. It's much, uh, harder once you give someone a salary increase to decrease it, uh, another year, but you can always give a, another bonus or more bonus. Um, and, uh, based upon the numbers and the, and what the town accomplished, uh, you all were provided a very huge, uh, list of all the accomplishments in 2016. Um, I felt that it was, uh, proper to recommend, uh, a 5% bonus for each of them. Obviously, it's not what, uh, they all wanted, you know? Russell wanted it a little more, probably upset with the 5%. Marty's probably happy with the 5% because it's two percentage points more than he asked for. Uh, and Andy asked for nothing. The other factor that I, I looked at when, uh, making the recommendation was the cost of living index. Uh, cost of living index for 2016 increased to, I think it was 3.7%. And as a result of that, and looking at the other numbers by the other municipalities in the region, it seemed to be a very fair and equitable, uh, uh, bonus for the performance of, of year 2016. So it's here for your debate deliberation. You can speak about each employee. You can, you can change the numbers. I was only asked to make a recommendation and, and, you know, it's up to you for decision.
Gentlemen.
Ladies.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, first of all, I want to, uh, just thank Keith for, uh, jumping in the middle of this, uh, topic. It's, it's not the easiest topic to, uh, kind of walk into and negotiate and, uh, um, work, work through. So thank you, Keith, for, for volunteering to do that. Um, second thing I want to do is I'm not going to read through this list, but what I have here is a list of the accomplishments that, uh, were done by the town this past year. It's a lengthy list and it's not fluff. It's, uh, real accomplishments, um, that took a lot of work, a lot of dedicated effort, um, by, uh, not a bunch of individuals, but by an excellent team. And I think, uh, the reason why that is, is because we have excellent team players and we have some excellent, uh, leadership on the team. And so, uh, I truly appreciate that, um, Andy and, and Russell and Marty. It's all, all exceptional. So thank you for all that you do. Um, I, I do, uh, in looking at, uh, what Keith proposed, um, as you summed up, well, I think, you know, in some cases, it's, it's better than what was expected. Other cases, maybe a little disappointing, but, uh, I think it's, I think it's fair to, uh, fairly reflects the accomplishments of the year. And I think it also, um, uh, puts the town in a stronger position going forward.
Without a doubt.
Yeah, I also want to mention that along with that recommendation, um, we're also, I would like to see, and I, I believe Keith, that you meant to mention this, but maybe did not, was the, uh, the study for, um, to do a survey. Did you mention that? Okay, I must have been dozing. So, um, I didn't hear that. But anyhow, um, I think the, uh, the study is critical to be able to do that, make sure that, uh, we are competitive out there in the marketplace. I think we, uh, um, have a lot of individuals here that enjoy working here and, uh, we certainly love having them. And we don't want, um, them to ever leave just because we're not keeping up with what the market offers and what, uh, we should be offering for the quality people we have. So I definitely would like to see that done as well. And, um, uh, I really honestly don't have any adjustments to recommend to what Keith is offering.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll jump in.
Anyway, Dee?
I also have the same list and looked it over. And you'll have a tough job probably the following year if you try to keep up with this. You're going to have to work really hard because it is very impressive. And it is a good team here. Um, just coming on board and not sitting out there to see how yous all work together and the things that you pull off is absolutely, you know, hats off to yous. I wouldn't want your jobs. Um, I think a bonus is, is a wonderful thing. The word itself says what it is, it's a bonus. When you create good things for us as residents, and I'm trying to speak for everybody, you need to be rewarded for it. Sometimes when it comes in a salary, it just disappears and you don't have it because you use it for whatever, but a bonus is all in one lump sum. It's easier to save, it's easier to put away, and like I said, I, I think it speaks for itself that you've done a really good job and you need to be rewarded for something like that. And everybody takes salaries for granted, you know, "I'm gonna get, you know, fifty cents on the dollar" or, you know, "A dollar," whatever it is. But when you can get a substantial bonus, um, I, I just think it's, it's impressive, it's nice and I liked what Keith worked out and, uh, of course, it's all to Andy's discretion and, um, that's for him to say, but, um, the list he gave us, I just want everybody to know, was very impressive and it's just wonderful. We can just keep going like that and getting projects done and moving forward like this. And that's all I have to say.
Next, Gary?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Thank you Keith for, uh, taking the lead on this. I just wanna mention, I, I am all for the bonus structure, uh, for the charter officers. I'm also for looking at the employees, uh, the staff. We have a very, very good team and it's headed by, you know, a really crack management team. I mean, it, it's real, it's really impressive. And Andy, I'd like, if you could, and, uh, and I'm speaking for myself right now, if you could come back with some proposals, I'm concerned about the cost of a study, if you can give us some kind of an idea, you know, uh, what that would be, uh, to look, to look at the staff and the commensurate salaries of neighboring towns, you know, for something like that. Um, I wanna mention to the audience that, um, this is, uh, we've had six straight years of surplus budget. Uh, that's virtually unheard of in this day and time and era and I, and it's done, uh, i- it's accomplished through, uh, the entire staff, not just the upper management, the entire staff, watching the pennies and the dimes and the nickels. And, and I really see it in the day-to-day stuff. I can't tell you the number of times I watched December, and I'm not gonna get into specific details, but where she's, I'm like, "Dee, you can, you can throw that away, it's okay", you know? And she's, "No, no, 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 I got a use for it, I got a use for it." You know, uh, you know, little things like that. It's the mindset and it's the mindset that's put out, uh, by the staff and, and I'd like to, you know, make sure they get properly rewarded, you know, for that, in addition to the, uh, uh, upper management, you know, that we have. But I, I'm, I'm okay with the, uh, the bonus structure for the, uh, uh, upper management employees, the contract employees and, uh, look forward to seeing what, where, where the staff lines up in terms of commensurate salaries, et cetera. Okay? That's where I'm at, so.
Freddie?
Yeah. Keith, I wanna thank you for all this information that you did, you, uh, did with those, uh, giving us this information. I agree with, uh, everything it says in here and I appreciate all the work you've done, Andy, and I think you deserve what we're, what we're talking about here and I fully support it.
Awesome. I'm gonna make it real easy. I'm gonna ditto everything everybody else said because no need to repeat it. You all do a fantastic job, we greatly appreciate you and I'm on board with, uh, what Keith, presented to us. So, I don't know if we need to make a motion to approve that? So if somebody'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bonus structure for the, uh, contract employees and, and the study and to, for Andy to bring us back, uh, uh, study costs.
Okay. Public comment? No public comment? Public comment closed. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Absolute.
Mayor? Mayor, I'll say-
Go right ahead.
On behalf of the three of us, I, I wanna thank you all. I greatly appreciate the opportunity that you give us to come in here every day and, and do what we do for this town. Uh, this remains a, just a, a wonderful place to work. Uh, you know, we all look forward to it, we work well together and, uh, you know, I'm just looking forward to keeping that going. Uh, we're on a good run, so I, I wanna thank you for that. I wanna thank Keith for, for his role in this because this is, quite honestly, for me, this is an awkward thing, to discuss my conversation with you or performance, although we, we talk about everything throughout the year as, as things go on, to come back to ask you for something is, is a little uncomfortable for me and I know it can be uncomfortable for you, you know, potentially individually when we're sitting there and talking about it. It's not an easy thing to do, so I, I, I wanna thank Keith for his role. And, and, uh, certainly, uh, I'll say last but not least, I do wanna thank the staff because without the people who are sitting out there and the others who aren't here tonight but, but who are part of that team, there, there is no way that we could accomplish what we accomplished. That list we shared with you of, of what the town has done are, are, are very much team efforts. A- as good as, you know, Marty and I and Russell might try to be, if it was just the three of us, that list would look a whole lot shorter. So I, I, I do wanna thank you and just tell you once again how appreciative I am personally of the opportunity that, that we have here and the trust that you've placed in me and so, just on that note, uh, I'll just say thank you one more time.
So you buying lunch tomorrow?
Sure.
Listen, I, I just wanna say one last thing here. Keith, super kudos to, uh, stepping up and helping out here because, uh, this wouldn't go nearly as smooth without your assistance. So, uh, I thank you as, uh, always do and greatly appreciate all the hard work you do. I'm looking forward to seeing you in court tomorrow at nine. So, uh, anyhow, uh, anybody else got anything else? I'm, I'm, I'm good, what's, uh, what do we got next here? Approval of minutes, uh, do we need a? Well, you gotta call this, right, first, or no? Did we?
We did.
We called it, okay?
We're gonna approve them all at once. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve all the minutes.
Second.
Any public comment? Seen no public comment? Public comment closed? Any comments up here? No? Call the question. Dee? Dee?
Yes.
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 All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody want a second now? Let's go. Meeting adjourned.